At least I assume you're talking about me. I don't know. I didn't see if Chris came in too.
Yeah, Chris is in.
Chris is in. All right, seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Suzie, can you call roll please?
Okay, Councilmember Groves.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I am here. For the consent agenda tonight, before we approve it, Shannon's on here. I'd like to add introduction of the new fire chief under new business. Move it right to the top so he can get out of here. Yep.
Will that change? I'll approve the agenda.
I'll support.
Jim and Marty, any other discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yeah.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Citizen discussion items not on the agenda, just hit the raise your hand button and Michael will recognize you. Anybody? No, Mike?
Nope.
Sorry, full business, number four, letter A audit presentation.
Yes, our annual audit is complete. Peter Hefner from Free Good Hefner is here tonight. I will unmute him and he's going to go over a presentation. I'm going to share my screen and put the presentation, the audit presentation.
Perfect. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Perfect. My name is Peter Hefner and I represent Great Deville Hefner, the firm of certified public accountants that conducted the audit for the city for the year ended June 30th, 2020. And I am here to answer any questions you may have, but also I'm going to walk through some slides, if I may, and just show you kind of a historical perspective and that might help you think about maybe some questions or things of that nature. From my perspective, the audit went quite well. It's an unusual time, but your staff was very flexible. We came in and conducted many of the audit procedures. We also pulled together information related to the rate calculation for the township water and sewer. And during that process, it was, it went very smoothly and I thank your staff for their ability to pull things together for us. So thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen, Michael, if I may.
Okay, you don't want me to share the present PowerPoint?
I'm going to go to the audit if I can. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine. Hang on, let me make your co-host.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem. Let me just find you.
I noticed one of the slides was stacking the bars on the graph and I wanted to make sure it's a line graph because it threw everything off.
Okay.
So on the fund balance for the various funds, general fund, major, local, it was stacking them. So it was looking very unusual. So I address that. I see share screen. Should I try it?
Yeah, I just put it on. Major the co-host.
Perfect. Thank you very, very much. All right. Thank you. Can you see City of Lowell year ended June 30th, 2020?
No.
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 I'll try it again. Anything change on your year end?
No. Jim's back. That's it.
Yeah.
Let me just close a couple of things. First of all, I want to point out on page one of the financial statements is our audit report. And at the very top of the report, it talks about your responsibilities, the fact that management is responsible for the financial statements and it's our responsibility to express an opinion on those financial statements. And at the very bottom of page one of the financial statements is a nice paragraph that summarizes the opinion. It is two pages long. It's our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position, results of operations, cash flows where applicable, of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, the aggregate remaining funds, the component units in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And that's very summarized, but it's what I would refer to as a clean opinion that the statements are presented as required by the governmental accounting standards board as well as the state of Michigan in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So very positive. I'm going to flip here. I'm going to have you pull up your slides again, Mike.
Okay. No problem.
I think I had too many screens open here.
Okay, so.
So here is a whirlwind tour of your financial statements. If you would go to the next page. You could probably just page down.
There you go.
So go up one. There we go. Perfect. Perfect. So here is a picture of your governmental activities and this is on the full accrual basis of accounting. It's basically looking at your operations from a business perspective. So when you purchase a fixed asset, it gets recorded as an asset depreciated over its estimated useful life. Then the unusual spikes that you see here, in the case of the red line, that's your investment in capital assets. And the major increase this year was of course, equipment replacement out of your governmental activities, but also the showboat construction. So what's happening here is you're putting fixed assets, the showboat and other assets into place. And as they get depreciated, that red line will get forced down. You'll see that there is a dip in that blue line in 2018. That relates to when you put some of your endowment balances with the community foundation. They come off your books and they go on to the foundations books, but as you receive the earnings on those endowments, they come back to the city and get used for the related purposes. And the bottom line shows your unrestricted net position. And that primarily was driven down by your pension liability and your other post-employment benefit liability. So this is a look from a very macro level and looking at the bottom line of all of your governmental activities with fixed assets, pensions, everything included. If you go to the next tab or next page for me, please. And thank you, Michael. I appreciate it.
Yeah, one second.
We're going to take a look at your business type activities, which would be water, sewer, airport, electric utility. And it's the same perspective. We're looking at fixed assets being put in place and the top line represents your net investment in capital assets. So these are capital assets being put in place such as pipe in the ground, wire overhead. Net of net of net of the related debt outstanding. So again, the city has put additional capital assets into place. And then you can see our unrestricted balance. And for the most part, that represents water, sewer and electric. And then we have a restricted balance. That is primarily the covenants that require dollars be a set aside for your electric utility debt. If you go to the next slide for me. Okay, this slide is incorrect. The red line is correct. Your general fund, fund balance has been growing over time. The other two lines are actually being stacked upon the general fund. So they should be considered independently. So it shows your major local street funding and they have approximately $300,000 in each of those funds, major and local streets for fund balance. But what it's doing is it's stacking the graph on top of the general fund. What's impressive is all of those balances have increased over the past year. If you would go to the next page for me. This is a big picture look at your financial statements. This is looking from a full accrual business perspective, all of your governmental activities, and it just shows where are the dollars being invested. So you have general government, public safety, public works, culture and recreation, and then other. And very typical picture with public safety being the biggest investment. If you go to the next slide, we'll look more at the fund financial statements. So here is a picture of your general or your special revenue or I'm sorry sewer fund and to what extent is it breaking even over time. So you'll have a year where it makes money, a year where it loses money. 2020 slight loss. Over time, it's a break even operation. And if you go to the next slide. You can see water has fairly consistently made a profit and in 2020, it had lost a small amount of net position. And if you go to the next slide. Here is a look at your light and power fund. Normally what I do is I compare like water, sewer, electric, but electric isn't comparable. It's so much larger than your water and sewer operations. But though low light and power in the current year, they made a had an increase in their net position. They invested in a quite substantial amount of capital assets. And of course, they have the board overseeing them. We've presented their audit several months ago, but just to give you a perspective of the entire city operation. In addition to the audited financial statements, we provide a letter of communications and I would refer to that as the communication to the audit committee. And I would say that that was quite a boilerplate letter. We didn't identify any opportunities for improvement in your system of internal controls. So during the audit process, we look at your internal controls as part of the audit process to determine what we're going to test. And we didn't find any material weaknesses or significant efficiencies, which I think is a positive for sure from the perspective of management.
Peter, a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The expenses out for all the water sewer wastewater, does that take into account depreciation?
Yes. So a large portion of your operation, I'm going to pull it up on my side and just tell you how much that is.
Okay.
But the dollars out don't necessarily represent capital outlay or purchase of fixed assets. They're the depreciation of those assets. And so when I take a look at your financial statements, just bear with me real quick here. As you invest in the capital assets, of course, they're being depreciated. And in the current year, almost there. That loss includes depreciation on fixed assets of in the case of the sewer fund. It's about $90,000. In the case of the water fund, it's $178,000. In light and powers fund, it's $650,000. So yes, in in the expenses is the depreciation, not the purchase of those capital assets.
Okay.
Other questions I can answer about the audit process or the financial statements themselves? They're really detailed and they provide schedules on each and every fund that you operate on. I was looking at things from kind of a very far out level, but your general fund increased fund balance approximately $200,000. Your designated contributions is really where the showboat construction process is flowing through. But in the case of your major and local street funds, they both increased fund balance for the current year. And we did see a picture of your sewer, water and electric utility operation as well.
Peter, how does the showboat funding get through the city when we're not paying a penny? I don't quite understand that.
Sure, sure. No, totally understand it or understand your question anyways. The way the process works is that when the state writes a grant or provides a grant funding for the showboat, that grant is being received by the city, recorded as revenue in a fund called the designated contributions fund.
Okay.
And then as the costs of the boat are being incurred, they are shown as an expenditure on the city's books and on your fixed assets. So the city owns that boat. That boat is being capitalized and it'll be depreciated over its estimated useful life. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Yep.
So basically you're kind of the fiduciary for that asset of the community. And that asset will be on your books in the future. And as contributions come in, they flow into the city, the city accounts for them. And then as distributions or dispersments are made for purposes of constructing or, you know, operating the asset, those will flow through the city's books as well.
Okay.
And I think that the primary funder, the state, wanted to see, you know, have the city in charge of the operation.
Yeah, for accountability. Yes.
Any other questions?
Nope, I'm good.
No.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure. Your report will be, has been submitted to the state of Michigan and then we assist with some of the filing as well. So we'll take care of that and we'll move forward. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Line as well.
Okay, item B, plant expansion studies, Mike.
Yes, tonight I'm presenting to you both plant expansion studies for the proposed water and wastewater plant expansions as we're working through that process. As we're working with the task force, I felt it was important that you saw the reports and at least get a general overview of them. So I've invited Brandon Maris and Dave Austin from Williams and Works to come and speak about it. And I'm going to unmute Brandon.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hi.
Should we start with the water treatment plant expansion?
Correct.
But this report is from March of 2018, so I would adjust prices up accordingly. But we reviewed their current operation. We met with Brian at the plant and developed two options or looked at basically expanding the plant as it is now with the line softening and the filtration. It's a tried and proven method for treating water, for softening the water. And it's of course followed up with chlorine, disinfection by safe drinking water for everybody. Then we also looked at some of the newer technologies out here and nano filtration where you abandon the old way of doing things and you simply pull the water through very small openings, nano opening, micron size openings to clean the water. So you know, there's a little bit of a drawback with that type of a system is it's high operating cost and it actually kind of cleans the water too much. It doesn't give it that taste that most people are used to in their drinking water. So when we boiled the report down, we provided cost estimates for both types of plants. We looked at the water supply and figured a new well would be needed, whether it's out there at that field is a little bit of a question right now that a little bit of hydrogel would be needed to answer. But ultimately, we recommended expanding the plant as it's operated now. And the plant is actually set up to add a second solid contact clarifier with common wall construction to the first one and to just extend the filters as well. And the associated pipe gallery, we had estimated back then it was about a $2.6 million project. I would add 40% to it if I was adding, if I was looking at costing that project today. We've seen quite a bit of increase in the cost of this type of construction. So we would be, you know, probably 40% of that would be about another million dollars. So you're probably looking at about a three and a half million dollar project to double the capacity of the water plant using the same technology you have now.
Brandon, I have a question for you.
Yes, Mike.
Study can do this, but if by chance we didn't service the other areas and basically only service the city. What, obviously we wouldn't have to do a full expansion, but what upgrades to the plant based on the study, do you think we would have to do?
There were upgrades to the pumps that would be required. So we'd be talking, I would say it would be less than a million dollars worth of work to handle those type of things, replacing some of the old pumps and doing some of those things. But the general, I mean, the solids contact clarifiers in great shape, but those are the type of things that we would look at. But in that range for some of the capital improvements. I had a recent discussion with Brian about that and he shared some information, so.
Interesting. Any questions on that part? We need to cover water now?
Wastewater.
That was the water, yeah.
Wastewater.
Okay, for the wastewater plant expansion, a big focus on that appears in the beginning where we look at the ultimate service area, the ultimate demand, you know, from, from the city of Lowell, which is largely built out. We didn't estimate a whole lot more coming from the city of Lowell. We did, we did have some. We had the benefit of a town, of a report from Lowell Charter Township where they had identified five areas of future, possible future service area. And they had estimated an ultimate capacity of anywhere between 1.6 and 1.7 million gallons a day. Now that's out past 2050. So that was more than a 30-year look. The 20-year look was a little bit less than that. And so that's why it's broken down in those 20-year plans and more. And then we looked at Virgin's township. There's the two sections of the township that, you know, the high school and its neighboring section. And we estimated some possible flows there. So within 20 years, you know, we could be, you know, at around 2.15, 2.13, thereabouts. And over a longer period of time, you know, we could be you know, up to, up to 3.3, 3.4 MGD. And I do want to stress the importance of getting the INI under control. We have taken that into account in the ultimate service area and how large we should, we should design the plant to be both in kind of like a phase one expansion and then ultimately a phase two expansion. Because this can be modular to some extent. So we estimate, you know, the goal would be to eliminate about 400,000 gallons per day on average of what we call INI inflow and infiltration, groundwater, floodwater, others getting into the system. So that's a part of it. Then, you know, we took you kind of down three paths with this report and provided cost estimates for those paths. So the first path would be to expand the plant. You know, at the same size you have now, you have each oxidation ditch is about 713,000 gallons of water. Those units are sized basically to have a 24-hour flow-through detention time. You know, at the normal wastewater levels, we would expect to see from, in a residential, in an area like this, pretty standard typical strength wastewater. So we could add more oxidation ditches to increase the average day plant capacity. But I did jump ahead of myself a little bit. The big thing is the headworks. You guys have put a lot of money into a pump station that's built right there at the wastewater plant. So everything that comes into the plant comes through that, that pump station right now. There's only two pumps in there. There's room for a third. So if you wanted to maximize that the plant to accommodate what you could get through, actually you could put bigger pumps in there too. So we would look at a new headworks building because your old one just has, the components are just too small to really get any more than four MGD through that. We would want to go to at least to a six MGD plant and we would build it off to the sides. We could keep everything running while we built it. But we would put in a larger screen, a larger grid removal system, and then we would set up flow splitting, you know, to the existing train of oxidation ditches and then to some new oxidation ditches or a different technology, which is also offered in this, in this report. So, so that was, the headworks has been identified as a bottleneck. And the decision whether to go to six or eight MGD, you know, it just is just a decision that the city would have to make. It's not really that much difference from a cost standpoint, put in a large enough screen and large enough grid system to get up to eight MGD through that. That gets you really close to some of your worst INI events from, from recent flooding. So, you know, and then, so then you have the need to provide the biological treatment. We would still want to get that six to eight MGD through there if possible. And the secondary clarifiers turn out to be another potential choke point or point of restriction in the wastewater. So we would want to put in slightly larger clarifier, 60-foot diameter with any expansion we were to do. One oxidation ditch would need one clarifier. We would want to build them. They're 50 now. We'd want to build the new ones at at least 60. That's a 44% increase in the flow just by building, just by adding 10 feet of diameter to those. We also, we would want to add solids handling, sledge storage. With any expansion, we figured we probably need about 650,000 more gallons if we went up to about 2.13, 2.15. And then we would need, you know, up to 900,000 if we were to go, you know, up over the threes. So I laid out, you know, kind of two paths. One is expand just at the same size units you have now, which ultimately would get you to about 2.84 MGD. Or you could unbalance the plant a little bit, but you could flow balance and you could build larger oxidation ditches. You could build one that's 1 million gallons and that would take you up to 2.42 with one oxidation ditch in a slightly larger clarifier. So I've cost that out. Then if, then depending on which way you decided to go with that expansion, then in the future, if you needed more, you would just build a fourth oxidation ditch and secondary clarifier with the requisite, you know, sledge storage capacity and such, and still have that headworks in place to handle those, those peak flows, those higher peak flows. So now another option, and this, this could come into play if the state were to add an ammonia limit, for example, to the discharge would be to go to a more advanced biological system. I used what's called an aerobic granular sledge system that we're going to implement in the city of Greenville with the approval of Eagle. And this, this is a newer technology, but it's built on the old activated sledge technology that's in place now at the plant. It's developed in Europe. It allows for a high level of treatment in a smaller basin, which may be attractive since everything we're building here is in the floodplain. So and it's cost accordingly and such, and it's a consideration. Like I said, I think that would really come into play if the state were to increase discharge limits. We've reached out to them about that, but they haven't told us one way or another. I don't get a sense that they would that much being a discharge into the Grand River basically. So, so then we have the cost estimates and just, and then you can lay them out there, but if we're over, you know, $11 million, that includes over two and a half, $2.2 million of other improvements, SCADA system, concrete repairs, some pumping improvements, efficiencies with the rotors and such that were identified in a previous report as needed capital improvements at the plant. as needed capital improvements at the plant. So that's, you know, to kind of just boil down, uh, recitation, I think of, of what we've done to this point. Obviously, there's, you know, there's other systems out there that we could look at with SBRs and different things and, uh, but really, you know, Brian had indicated and the past performance of the plant shows that it's been a really good plant for a number of years. And the oxidation ditches are still being built, you know, the rotors are a little bit better, we could put VFDs on them, that's included in the budget. Update the SCADA system, that's included in the budget, adding sledge storage, that's included in the budget. So maybe really giving you a, a complete project, and then you could just decide, you know, really what size you wanted to go. You, you could go slightly larger, you know, you don't, you could go somewhere between a million, you know, and like the 713,000 if you wanted to kind of incrementally, you know, to maybe give yourself a little buffer, depending on how those flow projections came out. So, and I think with, you know, with the 20% contingency and some, you know, what I think is some pretty conservative cost estimating. You know, I think, I think that's a, you know, you'd have, you'd have the budget to be able to go, you know, maybe you build a couple 800,000 gallon, or 800,000 gallon oxidation ditch, and that gives you a little bit of extra capacity, you know, and so it's not so tight on that 20-year flow.
I have a couple.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I was reading this, this afternoon, are we even without an expansion, are we getting close to maximum capacity there?
Yes, absolutely, you are. You're right at it, 98%, and, and some of that is INI, so you could, uh, yeah.
Uh, well, that's the second part of my question. Aren't some of the INI issues going to be dealt with when we, like, I know Monroe Street has a, a big influx, I think you narrowed it down to that school building, and aren't some of those issues going to get dealt with? With the paving and redoing the streets?
Yeah, Cliff, those, those are going to be taken care of, and that's a question that I wanted Brandon to, uh, to answer is that even, we need to take care of that INI. But even without that, we still need an expansion, and Brandon, maybe you can.
Okay.
Span that.
Right. Can I ask one question before you do that?
Yeah, sure.
If the township pulled away, I'm looking at the flow capacities, and this is something that Dan and I talked about. The flow capacity for the city of Lowell is .83. If you were able to eliminate, let's just say, not all .4, but .3 of that INI, and then maybe in a best-case scenario, add .2 uh, for the ultimate, um, growth for future, future projected flows, that puts you at about 1.13, which is about, it, it's still, I believe, under 80%. So if the township decided to, at some point, they're going to just do their own thing. My understanding and my interpretation of this is that you wouldn't have to expand the plant. You would have to obviously replace the headworks regardless. But the way I'm reading this, the, 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 the expansion is obviously to accommodate our current service agreements. But if they decide to set, go to their own system, then this isn't a need.
I, I would say so, I mean, I laid out where we, where we've designated the future flow coming into the system, and obviously the large, a large part of it is from Lowell Charter Township. And if you were to eliminate the INI, I mean, that gets you, you know, it reduces it by, the full 4, 400,000 would be like a 30% reduction, you know, in the current flow capacity, so you would be, you probably bring it down by a quarter. And obviously that would, that would eliminate the need, uh, from an expansion side, but you'd still want to rebuild the headworks for that peak capacity. And we may want to look at, you know, rebuilding a, a secondary clarifier, uh, you know, so we, so we have that flow on the backend too, without, without bike, without discharging solids from the clarifier, which is what happens now.
Mike, I, I have a question, uh, we got 2021 coming up. If this is feasible and the townships do not pull out, what are we looking at from a data to sit there and get this all okayed? Find the funding, things like that part of it moving forward? I mean, is it five years away? Is it three years? What does that plan look like to get there?
It seems to me it's the next five to 10 years is what I kind of have sensed.
Okay, could you also give me an idea, what does that rate increase look like to the ratepayers? I'm quite sure with the, uh, close to $16 million expansion for the water and the water wastewater, that would definitely some increases to, to ratepayers, so down the road, if you could get us some information, what that looks like?
I believe SAW, the SAW grant took this into account, I will double check. Um, and if you recall, the SAW grant, it was, we obviously raised rates 6% projected out, 2 to 3%. Um, but that being said, I'd have to double check if this was part of that.
Okay.
Other, the other issue is I think you're going to have to renegotiate the agreements with the townships if you do this, because we're subsidizing, I mean, we're subsidizing their development, so it, it's something that we're going to have to obviously re, take a look at our agreements as well. So, yeah, it's not, it's going to take some time.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Dave, did you have anything to add?
All right, thanks, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, item three is the showboat, before we get to our part, Mark Munt is on, he wants to provide a fundraising update. Oh, and Teresa, hi Teresa.
Good evening. Well, it's been a month since we talked about this, so I thought it was time to give an update. We've had a very busy month, our, our fundraising committee meets every two weeks in person, and then we meet behind the scenes a lot. Uh, brick sales are very brisk, um, but if you know anybody that's looking to buy one, send them our way, we'll happy to sell some more. Uh, on the bad news front, we did not qualify for the Amway grant, we fell outside of their scope of giving, which wasn't too much of a surprise, but we thought we'd take a shot at it anyway. Uh, we're still waiting to hear back from a couple of the Grand Rapids, uh, foundations, so we're hopeful for that. Um, a month ago, I told you we were at $354,000 roughly. Today, I'm here to tell you that we're at $485,000, which means we have a little less than 300,000 left to raise. So, good news for us, we're moving forward steadily, um, and things are looking good. Uh, if you know anybody that's got big pockets, so we sure could use another 50 or 100,000 dollar donation, that would really give us a good shot in the arm. But we'll get there one way or the other, I reckon.
One brick at a time, Mark.
That's right, one brick at a time. Oh, yes, uh, thank you for that, Mr. Solz, we know, we've sold right around 80 bricks. But, uh, that's just a, that's a number that doesn't stand still, we're selling them all day, every day, all day, so, uh, any questions, anybody?
Nope, thanks, keep going.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Appreciate your time, thanks, Mark.
And welcome, Leah, by the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to follow up on that, um, the good news is, the city took a, uh, $403,000 check from the chamber on Friday. That included, um, the, uh, the naming rights, the, about $29,000 of the bricks, and all of the proceeds from the, from the last two rotary auctions. So that accounted to $403,000. And the good news is, um, if you look at the amount of work just needed to complete Wolverine's contract in our current contracts, we have $54,000, 570, 54,577.44 cents to complete that contract. The good news is, the, there's $93,750 out there that's pledged. We don't have the money yet, but it's being pledged, so in theory, we've met that, and now we're starting to move towards the ba, the bathroom and the endowment. So we're, we're getting there, we're, we're a lot better, we're in pretty, you know, we're in good shape, and we got about, um, after all of that stuff and all the, and the bills that you approved tonight, we have about, um, I'm just going through my numbers. Uh, we got about, I want to say, oh, we're supposed to get the, um, we're still got another 17,000 coming from the chamber, and later in the month, we'll get a check from the community fund for the $150,000. But not even taking that into account at this point, in today's, at today's date, we have about $1.2 million cash in hand. So we actually just got a giant invoice from Wolverine today, so it'll go in the next bill run. So we're, we're okay, I, I think, um, for, for, for Wolverine's work. So we're, we're moving ahead on that. Um, following up on that, I, um, I talked to, I've been in con, constant communication with Liz about this. Um, the, the committee for the nonprofit, um, what they're going, what they're looking at doing is, it'll probably be Liz and, uh, Teresa Hoffman as a chamber's representation for the nonprofit board. We would need to select two people, and then I discussed it with Jessica to see if it was legal. But the, but the, the, whoever that, those four members are, they could, in essence, select the other three people to come on that board, um, if they so choose. The other, the other, the other thing is, is being that even though this is a separately fundraised, there's, we're not dedicating tax dollars to it, it's still, because it were public assets that went through this boat, it's, the, uh, board should operate under the Open Meetings Act. Um, that was something that the city attorney advised me today on. So, um, I guess we could possibly, you know, at some point real soon, we could get the city's representation on that, on the, on the, on the showboat committee or a showboat board, and start the prof, process of transferring it to the nonprofit.
They want three, we're doing three citizens, three outside?
You can, you, it's a nonprofit.
Whoever we want.
You want, the committee can, you know, we would have two representatives from the city. They would have two representatives from the chamber, and then the other three could be whoever. A, a, and maybe the simplest way is to let the, let the nonprofit, you know, the, the, our four representatives select those three. Maybe that's the best way to do it, that's what I know when other non, in talking to Jessica, when other nonprofits form, that's not uncommon.
All right, I'm going to put that on the list for that stuff we're going to go through on the appointments then.
Okay.
We'll just add that as another thing. Uh, real quick, how many, uh, taxpayer dollars have we spent on the showboat?
Other than, other than my time, mine and Dan's time, and Richard's time, nothing.
Just a quick reminder to everyone, zero taxpayer dollars. Cliff, how many?
Zero.
Correct, all right, item D is MERS, Mike.
Um, hang on. Oh, I'm sorry, we have, we have some actions later in the meeting that we'll need to take action on. Um, the good nu, the, the good news is, we finally settled the con, the contracts for IDW. Um, you're going to be, in a few minutes, you're going to be presented with some modifications to the pension system. Um, the good news is, is there's light at the, we're starting to see light at the end of this tunnel. Not going to be, it's not going to be tomorrow, and it's not going to be, you know, it's probably going to be 20 to 30 years from now, when you start seeing the positive gains, but, um, it was, you know, it, we're, we're in a, we're in a, we're in a good position. It's, it's going to be, I'm not going to say it's not going to be painful going forward, but
Right.
we're looking at that, now that we've gotten that part of it resolved, the next issue obviously is financing. Um, we're on a path right now, we have an amort, we have an amortization path that 18, 19 years from now, it's going to be a, it's going to be a very large chunk. There are options to try and alleviate that, that aspect. Sometimes MERS will re Alec, re-amortize, best word to explain it, your 30-year debt schedule. We're technically 11, 12 years, we're about 12 years in from 2008 when MERS set the 30-year cap. Um, really, it's been since 2017 where we've made any a dent at trying to address that issue. Um, the fact that we're bridging down and closing a plan, MERS is oh, u, usually tends to work with you on that. The other option, which is very, which is risky, actually both are risky, because both are subject to market trends, is we could investigate the possibility of pension bonding, it's very common. Um, a number of cities and, and counties and the state have done it. Um, there is risk to it, I'm not saying we do it, but I'm starting to investigate those options. And once I have more information and on a path, I will, I will come back to you on that, so.
Aren't we talking about historically low bond rates right now, too?
Interest rates, yes, that is good, the only, the problem with pension bonds, the risk with pension bonds is if the market doesn't go in the, in the projected path, you have to obviously make the debt payment, but you also have to address that market gap. So there is a, there is a risk, but there's a, there's a risk of even just stretching it out 30 years. There's a bit, there's just as much of a risk as if you just follow the path for the next 18 years. Um, if the rate of returns go down, market, market trends go down, there, there, it's, there is risk, no matter what you do.
All right, any questions for Mike on the MERS update?
Nope.
COVID-19 update, Michael.
Um, the governor today made changes to, um, added the 12 days to the public health order, which, um, which will put the public health order in place now until December 19th. Um, so I would just, our next meeting is on the 21st, I don't, as of right now, I don't know what that, what that means for the 21st meeting. The, so it remains to be seen, anything up to the 19th, Gordon Commission-wise, has to be done through Zoom. Um, we cannot have more than 10 people in a gathering. Um, and no more than, according to the public health order, no more than, you know, two different households in a, in a room. So, um, we've done that with, with staffing, we've had minimal issues, we've kept staff pretty far apart. Um, we do have some employees working remotely. Um, we, we're trying to address, we're trying to be mindful of that, knock on wood, nobody gets sick. Um, and we're, 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 we're still moving along with that. Um, trying to think, what else? Oh, one of the discussions that's out there right now, um, amongst city managers and employment circles is mandatory vaccines for employees. Um, I can tell you I'm not a fan of that. Um, some communities are, um, they've had, they've actually created COVID-19 banks where they'll put like 160 hours for COVID issues. By, by federal law, you're mandated to keep 80. There's talk that some commu, communities that have done that, they're going to basically say, okay, in order to get that bank, you have to have your vaccine. I personally have some.
Is that legal?
Uh, I believe from an employment end standpoint, it may be. Um, the issue is obviously with unions, it's going to be treated as a condition of employment, so you, subject to bargaining. Um, I kind of view it like, when I was a deputy sheriff, they asked you, they, when we, when we got hired in, they suggested you get a hepatitis shot. You didn't have to do it, but it was, it was on you. Um, my situation where I worked, we actually had, had a deputy who was exposed and at later date did pass away, so it was obvious to everyone. I hired in, and, and with a large number of people, it was kind of obvious all to us, it was like, okay, let's just go do it. Um, so did, ran through those tasks, it was never an issue. Um, that's kind of how I view this. Um, I've, I've already talked to the police union, I haven't had a chance to talk to the DPW about it yet, but my position kind of is, uh, I'm really taking a wait-and-see approach on all this stuff, it's just too new. My position kind of is, uh, I'm really taking a wait and see approach on all this stuff, it's just too new. And there's not a lot of information, we don't even know when we're gonna get the vaccine, so. Um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion on it as we speak.
All right, any questions for Michael on COVID nineteen? Okay, uh, Dan, Arbor Board update.
Evening Mayor and Council, uh, last meeting I was asked for an update on what we've done from Arbor Board items. Um, as you're aware, Arbor Board because of COVID hasn't met since, uh, March ninth. However, through the, uh, information prior to that, plus the, uh, uh. Comprehensive tree plan, we do know things that need to be done and things come up all the time, so. We, we try to take care of them as we go along with the rest of our DPW work. And what I've done is I broke down the zones from the, uh, comprehensive tree plan to give you a quick update. Uh, zone one is area east side of town, north of Main Street. Uh, up through that area, we've taken out three trees in Oakwood Cemetery and two street trees in that, in that vicinity. Plus a trimming of several street trees that were in the way of, uh, of for snow plowing and for other issues up through there. Um, I just wanna mention too, when we do our Monroe Street, it appears one or two s- street trees may need to come out. During that project because of the size of the tree and the condition of the tree, I'll keep you posted on that. Uh, for the area south of Main Street and east. Uh, side of town, uh, that Rogers Field property, we spent considerable time this past summer. Uh, trying to keep the trees irrigated through there, those small trees. Uh, I was a little surprised with that, same with, after all the flooding and everything, you would think that we've gotten plenty of water. But by the end of the summer, they were pretty dry, so we had to do some work with them. And then there were two, uh, street trees down in that neighborhood that were taken out that were in, in need of removal, they were, uh, pretty hollow. We've trimmed trees downtown along Main Street to accommodate pedestrian activities. And again, if you recall seeing the green bags on some of the younger trees down there for extra irrigation. Um, the northwest side of, uh, Lowell, north of Maine, west of the river. Uh, basically, we, uh, finished up our cleanup of the trees that were lost in Creekside Park, we have not replaced them yet. We're in the process of, uh, working through that and the same with the trees that were lost at Recreation Park. Uh, we have not replaced them, but we're in the process of figuring out what we're gonna put in and then we'll, we'll go out and get some, uh, good quotes for those type of trees. Also talking with, uh, with, uh, Suzie about maybe utilizing those trees we planned as part of our Arbor Day. Uh, celebration this year, something we're looking at.
Thank you, Dan, any questions for Dan or Jim, right, you're on Arbor Board?
Yeah, no, I, I just appreciate the follow-up Dan did, so, and I read it all, so thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Dan, it seems like every time we ask you for something, it's right there the next meeting, so.
Try my best.
I'm appreciative of the work you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, uh, introduction of the new fire chief. Uh, Shannon's on with us today, we just swore him in last week, two weeks ago, so welcome Shannon.
We're going on week three this week, seems like, uh, month three this week, but, uh.
And they said it wouldn't last.
Yeah. Uh, Mike invited me to come in tonight just to address you folks, uh, for anybody that hasn't met me. Pretty sure I've met most of, uh, most of the council, uh, one interaction or another, but, uh, as you know, I am Shannon, whether I'm the. The new fire chief here, um, I've been with the department as a paid member since nineteen ninety-eight. Um, as a firefighter, I was an explorer for four years prior to that, uh, in high school. And have served in just about every position this department's had, from explorer through. Uh, deputy chief and interim chief for a short period of time as well, so. I'm looking forward to the fun challenges we've got going on here and, uh. Looking forward to continuing to move along forward, thanking you guys for your support as well. All three of our municipalities have been very supportive of us and we very, very much appreciate that, so. We do have some, uh, some things going on down here, uh, we are in the process of specking a truck. Uh, this will be our, our county apparatus. Every seventeen years, for anybody that's not familiar with how that works, uh, the county contributes a portion toward the purchase of a new fire truck. Uh, we build the spec up as to what's gonna best suit our community. And the county, uh, goes out to bid with us and then we do the truck through them. Uh, they technically own the truck for that seventeen year period of time. They are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the truck. At the end of the process, we can either buy the truck, return the truck, or, uh, that's our two options, buy the truck or return the truck. Uh, current truck we have, we're probably, uh, we're looking at a couple of options on. Um, if we buy it, it's simply going to be simply for the use of resale, uh, we sold its identical twin a couple of years ago. And we think we could probably, uh, buy it from the county, resell it to the broker we bought it from. And then be able to contribute back toward the, uh, the incoming truck. Uh, we have a hiring process taking place tomorrow, actually tomorrow at seven o'clock. Uh, we have, uh, nine applicants right now, which is the first time I can say we've had nine applicants in probably. Ten years for a single trial period, so, uh, we've got a good mix of people with absolutely no background and people with full certifications. And licenses coming in to try out with us. Uh, my promotion to chief left a few spots open in our command structure. Uh, we have a process for promotion, so we started that process, uh, late last month. Uh, we had, uh, three members, uh, three of our current lieutenants that applied for the captain position or a higher position. We had five of our members apply for, uh, lieutenant positions. And those testing processes started this weekend and interviews are to follow, so. There any questions or comments or jokes, I'd be happy to entertain?
Well, I, I have jokes, we can save them now, we'll save them.
That's probably best.
Shannon, I appreciate you, you know I appreciate you and I'm glad you're sitting where I think you should be sitting. Yeah, Shannon, last time you and I talked, you were at, at the fire station there, we went and looked at the rescue boat. Are you still, uh, trying to locate a jet drive for that thing so you can get into shallower waters and make it more usable?
Yeah, um, it'd be great to be able to find somebody that would quote that project. Uh, I've requested a quote from two different locations and I've been told by both marinas that it's a possibility to do. Uh, I've yet to get a quote back on that, uh, the current, current boat we have, we, we still own two boats. Uh, but the current one is the, uh, the Zodiac with a fifty-five horse prop drive on it. The river's dropped at such a shallow point that that prop drive is gonna get chewed off the first time we drop that thing in there, uh, shallow water. Um, going to the jet drive would give us the ability to get into six, eight inches of water and still. Move forward, so, yeah, we're still looking into that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for Shannon? Thanks Shannon, I appreciate you waiting for us.
No problem, anytime, thank you.
Thanks Shannon.
Thank you.
Item B, fiscal year nineteen twenty general fund, Mike.
Yeah, since my arrival in twenty sixteen, city staff and I have been mindful of our finances. And have been able to continue to build a healthy fund balance in the event of unforeseen event expenditures. Each year, we've been able to add at least an additional hundred thousand dollars in fund balance to the general fund. This is a significant accomplishment, as records reflect, we had in the area of twenty thousand to thirty-five thousand. Fund balance between the two thousand seven and two thousand nine fiscal years. This is a significantly dangerous level of fund balance. Recommended Michigan, minimum general fund balance in Michigan is fifteen percent of your total general fund levy, that's actually now our policy. Um, today, we have approximately a million dollars in general, ex- excess general fund balance. Which is the equivalent to thirty-one percent fund balance. I must recognize for the past decking, si- si- significant focus on building fund balance to a reasonable level has occurred. That be- being said, we have some significant expenditures coming forward in the future. The obvious issue is the unfunded pension liability. Another issue in the near future, which is raising concern for me, is the city's share of the next fire truck that we just discussed. That we'll be purchasing in two thousand twenty-two. The worst case scenario in that case is that the city will have to contribute a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our share of the truck. This past fiscal year, we have seen revenue and expenditure projections much greater than budgeted. As we've had our recent revenue estimating conferences, they've shown improvement. Um, from what they reflected back in, in March, in April, when COVID first happened in the fall. We started to see that the, the projections were, were, were a little bit better. Um, in addition, along with the CARES Act assistance we've received, we are in surprisingly a much better shape than we projected. This being said, fugen- future revenues continue to be a mute moving target as we're still in the middle of the pandemic. The previous fiscal year ended June thirty, which we just verified through our audit. The city had approximately a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in general fund revenues over expenditures. If the city decided to bank this revenue, we would have approximately one point two million dollars in fund balance in case of an emergency. After further review, I recognize as we move forward, that continuing to build the fund balance might not be in the best interest of the city. The more revenue set aside in emergency is obviously a good practice. However, if you do this and ignore other structural issues, that is a problem too. Perfect example, in my former community, a neighboring community which I won't name, had literally a ninety-eight percent fund balance. But a significant unfunded pension liability. It was to the point they ended up bonding the unfunded liability. While pension bonding has good and bad issues, I've always questioned the need to build a ninety-eight percent fund balance. I believe the city is in a good position whereby we may want to add a little bit at a time. But I think it is a wiser decision to use excess funds to help alleviate problem issues. That said, I would suggest the city council consider taking two actions with a hundred and eighty-eight thousand in excess revenue over expenditures. The first thing I would recommend is to take a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of this. And make a principal payment towards the unfunded pension liability. I would take the remaining seventy-three thousand dollars and set aside for the future, uh, fire truck payment. Uh, going forward, I'm going to meet with our fire chief to evaluate their department's future capital improvement plan. And begin subsidizing funds annually to a proposed fund for future fire equipment purchases. I'm also pondering some idea of set a, setting aside funds for future police vehicles. I anticipate at some point we'd need to make a budget amendment to address this proposal. But I'm recommending the Lowell City Council utilize the excess fiscal year twenty twenty revenue over expenditures. To address the, uh, two expenditures I mentioned. And I further recommend that in future years, all fiscal year's revenue amounts over expenditures address continuing unfunded pension liabilities. Um, administration should have the fis- flexibility also to make inflationary increases to the, to the current fund balance with excess revenues as well. So just trying to come up with a different way of doing this, we've just been banking the fund balance, which is good, we should have been doing that, but. Um, if you were able to make a hundred thousand dollars a year in extra payments, that's a million dollars in ten years. Which down the road, when those years get real lean, maybe it's not as bad those years down the road. So that's kind of where I'm at with this.
Well, we've been talking about this for quite a while, taking.
Correct.
And putting money aside for the new fire truck, is that's what, three hundred, four hundred thousand our cost?
Hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty, okay.
That's like extreme.
Yeah.
Top of the line truck with every single thing on it you could ever want, that's, uh. I like the worst case scenario because I think that's a long, it'd be a long shot, I think.
Something to say.
Where, where do we get set to get to the percentage where the state doesn't get involved? Is it sixty-four percent the fund, sixty-five, seventy, how does that, so you don't have to go do all that work either?
For the, for the, for the pension?
Yeah.
We're at sixty percent right now, we are now triggered, so. I'm gonna have to file a corrective action plan no matter what.
But if we get up to a certain height point, you don't have to do that?
Sixty-one percent.
Sixty-one percent, okay. So you need a hundred thousand dollars put in there so you wouldn't have to do that.
Well, we're gonna have to file that plan, I.
Right.
Got a waiver last year, it's common.
Yeah.
But we're gonna be in good shape because of the, all the things that we're gonna be discussing. Agenda items.
Right.
So.
I think Shannon had something to say about the truck.
Yeah, if I, if I can just expand out a little bit, so where, where Mike got that figure from? Um, we, we put out an initial soft fueler bid, if you will. Uh, two year from now, what, uh, what were we looking at for a specific truck, very similar to the engine that we've got right now? Uh, the bid price came back between six, uh, six hundred and fifty and six hundred, uh, and seventy-five thousand, so looking at that six fifty marker. If we take the two oh eight that we get from the county out of that, uh, we had nothing else to put toward it, we don't get a community fund grant. Uh, we don't sell any of the other trucks, and it comes out to be about a hundred and forty-eight thousand would be each of the three municipality shares. Provided we had nothing to put into the, you know, from the fund balance of the fire authority as well. Uh, so that's, that's where that one forty-eight comes from. Good news that I. I'm apprehensive to say on a video is, uh, we're probably looking at south of six hundred on the truck now. So we've, we've trimmed back some stuff, we've reevaluated, uh, the apparatus that we're looking at, we've kinda looked at a different design. Uh, so we're probably looking, you know, close to that five fifty, five, uh, six hundred marker on the truck. So we've trimmed fifty to seventy-five thousand out of it already. Uh, which obviously then brings down your, your contribution to that as well.
Does the, does the county's contribution stay the same?
stays the same no matter what, they cut me a check for two hundred and eight thousand regardless of what we do.
Mike, do we get to take the depreciation value off that hundred and forty-eight thousand or since the county owes it, they take it?
The, well, the asset isn't technically owned by the city anyhow, it's owned by the authority.
Right.
And technically, that asset's not even owned by the authority, it's owned by the county.
Right, okay.
Yeah, they would depreciate the liability.
Right, okay.
They would depreciate it, the asset.
Well, I like putting the seventy-three thousand towards it, I mean, it gets us.
Right, and I'll be honest with you, I have a, I sense that we probably, even in this current fiscal year. With all of the CARES Act revenue we've received, we might be able to just be done with it, not even have to worry about it as, as a general line item. As a budget line item next year, i- i- it's, it's very well possible, but that'll remain to be seen.
Okay, no, I like the idea, we've been talking about this for quite a while, so. I think it's a, a good plan.
Good place to put the money.
It'll freeze up a lot of money for other things too that we need to do.
You need a motion?
Yes, please.
I moved that we allocate the excess fund balance to those two spots.
Our second. Cliff and Marty, any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweidel.
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, uh, item C, resolution twenty-four twenty, uh. Waiving penalties, Mike.
Per Michigan compiled laws two eleven point two seven B, failure to notify assessing office adjustment. It allows a waiver of filing fees when there is some sort of property transfer. Buyer guarantee or other transferee is required to file a property transfer affidavit with the local assessor within forty-five days. When property transfers ownersh- when pro- property transfers ownership. If not, penalties can be assessed five dollars per day if it's overdue and no more than two hundred dollars. Municipalities are permitted to waive state required penalties that commence after forty-five days has elapsed. As long as the governing body of a local te- tax collecting unit waives by resolution, the penal- the penalty levied. After many discussions with Jeff Rashid, who's on tonight, our assessor, is my recommendation, this fee be ways waived as. This is an issue that doesn't happen often, but tends to be more costly to collect than what we can actually collect. My opinion, it is, it, it is, uh, when this occurs, it's easier to just waive the fee. Um, I've attached resolution twenty-four twenty in addition with the statute referring to this. And I'm recommending approval of, of resolution twenty-four twenty waiving this administrative fee. Jeff, Jeff's on, if you have any questions for him about this. Jeff Jeff's on, if you have any questions for him about this. Jeff, you have anything to add?
No, I think that that really covers it. I don't know of any municipality that charges that fee, everyone, as far as I know, waives it. There may be an obscure municipality out there, but I don't know of any.
Isn't it more expensive to have somebody track people down? And collect the money or have a resolution to waive it than you would make on two hundred dollars?
Right, well, the, yeah, it's more expensive than it would be to try to track someone down. And most of the, that was, the property transfer affidavit came about when Proposal A came about in nineteen ninety four. Where you could file a principal residence exemption and get your exemption for the home that you own and occupy. The state wanted people, it wanted to force people to put these property transfer affidavits in with their local assessor. But now the need is really not there any longer, everyone files their deeds and their property transfer affidavits. Again, there's very few that don't, usually it's the ones that are just transferring, like if you're transferring it into a trust. Many times, your attorney will set up the trust and file a deed with the county. But then they don't file a property transfer affidavit with the local assessor. So those are the types of people that we could be billing. We we get deeds from the county once a month. And so if someone's attorney files a, I know we're kind of getting into this, but someone's attorney files a deed on their behalf. Because they transfer their home into their trust. We'll get that deed about forty five days after it was transferred. So if we get it on the forty sixth day, that person owes five dollars because they haven't filed a property transfer affidavit. So we could bill them for five dollars, and then if ten days goes by, then they're gonna owe us fifty dollar. It's it's like a never ending circle that really doesn't get you anywhere for the few times that you're gonna bill.
Yeah.
The more trouble, then it's worth resolution.
Yes, and and, yeah, and the state allows us to waive it, so most people waive it.
Anybody want to make that motion to approve Resolution twenty four twenty?
I'll make that motion that we approve Resolution twenty four dash twenty.
Support.
Marty and Cliff, any other questions for Mike or Jeff? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedle.
He's mute.
Where'd he go?
He's mute.
Well, there's some activity in the background, so I muted myself, but yeah, I say yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yep.
And Mayor Devoe.
Yes.
Did you notice how the new council person is voting with authority?
Yes.
Maybe we'll give her the gavel and she can bang it down.
No, that's mine.
Please don't.
That's mine.
For now.
Resolution twenty six twenty asset level test, Mike. Yep, the the Michigan Department of Treasury requires communities. Poverty guidelines for those who are unable to contribute toward the public charges. Those in this situation are deemed a poverty exemption if they meet all of the requirements. Annually, these resolutions must be established and reviewed and established. I've attached the proposed poverty exemption guidelines, Jeff can explain them a little bit better. But I've I'm attaching Resolution twenty six twenty. To address this, and I'm wanting the Lowell City Council to approve. Resolution twenty six dash twenty to adopt a current poverty exemption policy and guidelines in accordance with the General Property Tax Act. Jeff, can you can you go over these, please?
Yes, I'm not sure if it would be page one or page two, if you see the guidelines. They have, you know, one person household, two person household, if you're looking at that. So the federal government determines those poverty guidelines annually. And we're required by the state to adopt our own guidelines annually for poverty level. And the city always, you can't. You can't adopt a level below the federal guideline. So most municipalities, including the city of Lowell, adopt exactly what the federal guideline is. Or the how income for household, different person sizes. So each year we have to adopt that. As well as refresh if needed, like the asset level test. Asset level test, years ago, poverty exemptions, when residents would file a poverty exemption. You can only file it on your principal residence, so you have to own and occupy your home as your principal residence. Then you're allowed to file for this poverty exemption request. Can't do it on commercial building or your rental property or things like that. So if you own and occupy your home, you can apply for this. And in years past, you could have a million dollars in the bank as assets. And we didn't look at that, we just looked at your income. Level and how it how it compared to the poverty income level. And the state was had determined that, you know, people. Had assets where they should have been able to pay their taxes. So a few years back, the state determined that we need to, each municipality needs to determine. What asset level is appropriate for their municipality? That would be used by the local board review to determine whether or not someone qualifies for a poverty exemption. So we need to have the asset level as well as the income level. Reviewed and determined each year. And that's what this is showing here. Our asset level is set at ten thousand dollars. And it lists assets that people can have. What else I want to add? This year, we have not received any poverty exemption applications. They can file up until up until the December Board of Review, which is December fifteenth this year. So we may receive an application or so on the fifteenth. But to date for twenty twenty, we haven't received any poverty exemptions.
Is that typical?
We typical, we may receive one or possibly two. Yeah, we've we've had maybe one or two in years gone by, but this year we haven't received any. But again, this needs to be established each year. Because when the applicant comes along, we we give this out with the application.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty six twenty.
I'll support.
Cliff and Marty, any other questions for Jeff? Stu?
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Devoe.
Yes.
ourselves, we do.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Merced Fine Benefit Bridge, Mike.
Yep, for the past two and a half years, I've been preparing for modifications to our pension system. To address to address serious structural issues for the betterment of the city. As I've said many times, the city has approximately a three point four million dollar unfunded pension liability that quite frankly, nobody here created. Unfortunately, it wasn't until my arrival in twenty sixteen that it appears that it hadn't been addressed. If you recall, in twenty eighteen, we made a modification to our employee contribution. That allowed us to set aside some additional funds toward the unfunded liability. While I'm not gonna say that didn't help the situation, after additional research, it was apparent this wasn't gonna move the needle much towards the problem. As I've said before, since we are now sixty percent funded, we are triggered by the state of Michigan to file a corrective action plan to address this issue. Last year, I was able to request a waiver that was granted to file this. This will no longer be the case, however, we should be in a position to file the plan and work our way out of it. The next twenty years for the city are going to be difficult in addressing this. In twenty thirty eight and twenty thirty nine, we are looking at a. Of roughly a third of today's general fund revenues toward the unfunded pension liability. Granted, in reality, we make the payments out of all the funds in the city. That said, the changes that we will make may alleviate this some during that time. However, we have now created a situation where roughly ten million dollars in overall liability. Should not reach an eighteen million dollar liability twenty years from now. Additionally, we have the potential fifty years from now to have zero pension liability. While this is not as exciting as the showboat or new streets or facilities, this is a significant positive change for the city. Future leaders will be saying thank you to everyone who assisted with this. For the past year, I've negotiated with both our unions to address this along with retirement healthcare. I recognize this is painful and attempted to do this in a manner that was not so much. I'm pleased and thankful with the assistance from both unions and frankly, all employees. That we are going to start to see a light at the end of this tunnel. With the assistance of the two unions in the city, along with all staff. We are now in a position to make dramatic changes to the future pension pension liabilities. The two labor unions, along with city administration, have agreed to the following. Since all full time city employees, union, non-union department director and city manager are in the same plan. The following is being proposed, which is including draft language drafted language with MERS to change our plans going forward. Beginning on January first, twenty twenty, the unions in the city have agreed to a change to the pension multiplier. And their contribution going forward. If employees were hired before July one, twenty twenty, their future pension multiplier will be bridged. From two point five percent to two point oh percent. Employees' final average compensation or FAC, which is the last three consecutive of your last ten ten years, will not change. Nor will the years of service required to retire change. The benefit amount for anything accrued going forward will be reduced. As a result, the employee contribution will reduce from seven percent back to five percent of their wages, which was for many years. There are three documents, I'm sorry, in addition, all new hires after July one, twenty twenty. Will be placed in a defined contribution plan. The city will contribute ten percent of the employee's base wage. And the employee will contribute six percent of their base wage to a retirement account they can select with MERS. There are three documents which need to be approved. The first is documentation approving the bridging down of the future pension benefit going forward. The second document is Resolution twenty five dash twenty, which is creating the defined contribution plan for hires after July one, twenty twenty. The third is to approve the administration of that plan. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve the bridging bridging down of future pension benefits for participants. And the defined benefit program from two point five percent to two point oh percent. I also recommend Lowell City Council approve Resolution twenty five dash twenty. Which will close the current pension plan for new hires and establish a defined contribution plan. Furthermore, it is recommended that the city council agree, the city will contribute ten percent of the employee's wages, base wage. Whereby employees, the employee hired after July one, twenty twenty shall contribute six percent of their base wage. To a defined contribution plan. I've been talking to you about this. Probably cryptically, obviously, because we were in labor negotiations, but. This is something we gotta do.
We have to do three separate votes, Mike?
You gotta take three separate actions, yep, there's three agreements.
All right, then I'll make a motion to approve the bridge down of future pension benefits for participation in the defined benefit program. From two point five to two point zero.
Support.
Jim and Marty, any questions on the bridging down? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yeah.
Mayor Devoe.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty five dash twenty.
I'll support.
Marty and Jim, any questions on that one? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yeah.
Mayor Devoe.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, and now a motion to recommend the city contribution.
The the one to administer the new plan.
Administer the new plan.
I make a motion that we administer the new plan.
I'll support.
Cliff and Leah, any other questions?
Yes.
Sue?
Mayor Devoe.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, board and commission reports, Cliff.
I got nothing, sir.
Marty?
I have none.
Jim?
The LCTV board met this week, and this year we have a little over one hundred and eight thousand dollars to distribute. The cutoff date to get your applications into Susie at City Hall is February fifth, that is a Friday at five P M. I know she'll get it posted in several of the newspapers, et cetera, where we need to get that done. Then we'll be meeting shortly after that, and then we'll hopefully bring it sometime in March to the city council for approval. So it's ready to go.
All right, I don't have anything either, so Mike, city managers report.
Yes, first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Hurst. He wants to honor one of our officers, Officer Jezzlin Heard.
Chief?
To start, can you guys all hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well. We hired Jezzlin Heard back in the summer, well, we hired her actually last year, then she got pregnant and couldn't work until this summer, to the end of the summer. I don't know if you read the paper on the twenty eighth of November, twenty fifth of November, twenty eighth, maybe it was twenty eighth. Saturday night, she responded to the Hong Kong buffet, where the owner there had taken an order for nearly fifty dollars for a. A takeout, at that time, only he and his wife, Mr. Ming. And his wife were working, Dylan was working at the restaurant, and their takeout business was paying the rent on the bills. Anyways, the order was mistakenly made by its subject in Calum in Battle Creek area. Jezzlin Heard responded to the call because they were requesting assistance from the police department. When she responded, she heard, you know, the complaints of the Mr. Ming and his wife. And decided that since they were gonna be out this money, she would pay for the meal. Mr. Ming said, no, she didn't need to do that, she insisted, she ended up spending forty six dollars on some Hong Kong buffet food. Also leaving a five dollar tip. We got a really, really nice card from Mr. Ming, expressing his thanks and gratitude towards the police department. Watched the video and talked to Mr. Ming himself. And so we are going to award her, we wanted to do it at a meeting, but because we have to do it over the phone, it wouldn't be that fun. So tomorrow at two forty five, we're gonna be awarding her the police chief's commendation for going above and beyond what was expected of her to do. And hopefully she'll have her father there, who's a police officer for the G R C C Police Department. But we're gonna award her that medal tomorrow at the police department either, I'm not sure if we're gonna do it in the garage or if we're gonna do it outside, depending on the weather. So the public's really not invited, but if you wanna be there, just make sure you got a mask on and stay six feet away from everybody and so we don't get trouble by the governor. So. Also like to welcome our new council person, Leah Grove. You're always welcome to come down to the police department, we'll give you a tour and show you what we do.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to it.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Just a couple of other items. We are in the infamous lame duck period of the Michigan legislature, so never know what can happen there. The Michigan Municipal League last week held a press conference and they've been. Trying to develop a COVID nineteen community stabilization plan. One of the issues that's come about is. The the city, I mean, every city is having to deal with COVID, but the ones that are really, are the ones that are. Taking the biggest hit quickly are those cities with income tax, which is something we discussed when we when we put the. But the ballot initiative together, and it is, it is coming together. There's a number of community, the twenty four cities that that affects is is. Is going to be an issue for them, and I know there's bills in the legislature right now to try and.
To try and address that, um, whether or not they move, I don't know. Um, there's actually also a, um, there's bills in the legislature in right now that were introduced, actually bipartisan introduced. Um, to address, um, some of the, uh, issues with the, uh, Headley and the, uh. Proposal A, uh, constitutional amendments. Basically, the biggest, the biggest issue is, is when property value goes, grows too fast. It automatically forces your millage rate to go down. They're trying to clean that up. And then the other, the other issue is, um. With proposal A. You could have a significant, you could have a significant drop in property value, and we learned this during the Great Recession. But because of proposal A. The rate of inflation. The, the increase, the increase in taxable value can only go by the rate of inflation. Or five percent, which is ever less, and I believe the last ten-year average is like one point one seven percent. Um, increase, so they're trying to clean that up. So. When you have those negative. Drops in value, when the, when the, when the assessed value goes back up. The taxable value corrects itself as well. Um, so those are, those are two bills that are currently in the legis, I believe they're in the sen, they were introduced in the senate last week. Um, I don't, I haven't heard much, um, I do believe with, um. The incident last week pertaining to. Former Mayor Giuliani, I believe the legislature's not meeting right now. Um, so I don't know if that's gonna have an impact to their sessions. Um, but it, it's, it's, it's going on, so, um, that's all I have.
Mike, how does that affect us with the property values going out there since, uh, the businesses have been expanding out on the, uh, west side of town? How's that looking?
So I won't have a better, uh, I won't have a better description of it until, um. Probably February, once we start, once the tax year ends. Tax year ends December thirty-first. I, I anticipate we're gonna see some significant increases, especially. Well, in the area, west Maine area, um, the, uh. I don't know if that's gonna force a Headley rollback for that, for the DDA capture, I don't know. Um, it could, um. The thing you gotta remember though, is even if, even if the, the assessed values of the properties go up. Even on the commercial property, it still can only go up rate of inflation or five percent, which is less, so. Um, when there's uncapping, that's when you're gonna really see, or when the property transfers, that's when you're gonna see uncapping. But yeah, you are seeing, you will, you are gonna see some increased property values, obviously because of. The, some of the things that have happened.
Any other questions for Mike? Alright, appointments, let's get after it here. Susie printed me a list of the boards that we're responsible for and who serves on what. Um, so I guess we'll just go board by board and try to. Balance them out. I know Marty's availability changed a little bit, my availability's changed a little bit.
Um, Mike, just to let you know, Dennis Kent. He will be serving on the LCTV Endowment Board. He did, uh, accept the, uh, chairperson again. So I think he's gonna take it for another three years, so just FYI.
Cross him off that list.
Yep, yeah, he's gonna do it.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um. Zoning Board of Appeals is us, right? We all serve as.
Correct.
Members of that, and Marty is the chair of that. I don't think we've ever met since I've been on council.
One time.
Once, yeah, one time.
You know, if you wanna throw my name on there, there, Mike, I mean, I, I can do it, it's, you know, it's one time, it's no big deal.
We're all doing it, Jim.
We're all doing it together.
Yeah, that one's on a Monday.
Yeah, um, Airport Board is one that Greg was on, so that's a vacancy. So I don't know anything about that. I think when I started on council, uh, Jeff Althoff was doing it, so I don't think. And then I think Greg took over after that. I don't think there's ever been a change on Airport Board, so. Um, I'm open really to anybody who wants that. I don't know their schedule. Susie, do you know? The Airport Board's schedule?
Yeah, I think they meet the second Wednesday of every month. The second or third Wednesday at seven P M.
Did you say Marty?
Well, I was just curious, Wednes, Wednesday evenings I can do.
Alright, anybody have a problem with Marty being on the Airport Board?
Nope.
That one's done. Jim, you're on Arbor Board.
Yeah.
Keep it or trade it or pass on it?
Uh, I can keep it. We, you meet what, five times a year? And it's during the middle of the day, I mean, at lunchtime, so I, I don't have a problem at this point. Oh, that's good.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
Okay, um, Chamber of Commerce, Cliff.
I'd happily trade it.
Anybody want, what day is that, Cliff?
Um.
Second Tuesday of the month.
In the morning, right?
Yes, seven thirty in the morning.
In the morning?
Yeah.
That's when that big ball comes up?
I know what morning is, I just don't celebrate it.
I do.
You wanna do a seven thirty board with the chamber?
Um, how long do the meetings generally last?
They're an hour.
Alright, I'll do it.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
Alright, Leah, that's yours. Uh, DDA. Is me, that's during the day, though, that's a noon meeting, so. I'll keep it.
You'd have to have that.
Yeah, I have to be on it, so I'll keep that. So when I got one, Jim was the one, Leah was the one, alright, um. Cliff, Historic District.
I'm fine with it unless somebody wants to. Get rid of me or something.
No, the only person on Historic District that's ever said anything bad about you is that Julie lady.
Right.
Alright, that gives everybody one board so far, yeah.
Oh. You, uh, Greg used to be on the trails.
Yeah, that's the next one.
Oh, sorry.
Trails, Cliff.
What?
Did you want to do the trails?
Did you get that impression?
That's why I have that gavel you were talking about.
They will not allow electric vehicles on there, Cliff, regardless if you're on it or not.
Hey, I hit a hundred and five on the one paved stretch just last week.
Oh, Main Street? You call it Main Street, the paved one?
No, the trail.
Oh, the trail.
No, I would, I would love to be on that.
Does anybody have a problem with that? And for the record, it's not, it's not just electric vehicles. He almost ran Mike and Marty and I over on his pedal bike too, going about eighty, so.
Three years ago.
Trying to jump the showboat, if I believe, yeah.
Forgive and forget.
You can see we've done neither. Alright, Cliff is on trails. How about LCTV, Jim?
I'll stay on that, that's fine.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Needs a couple times a year.
Okay, alright, here's one. Light and Power, Marty, you can no longer do Light and Power?
No longer sit on that, so after.
And I cannot sit on it because Fire Authority is also Thursday nights.
Thursday at what time?
It's at six o'clock.
Till ten.
Six till two A M.
Four hours.
It is.
They start at six?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I could get, I, I would be late, I, cuz I'm open till six. And.
Anybody else have any interest in Light and Power?
Now, is Charlie on, I see Charlie's on there. I don't mind serving on it, it's just that in the summertime. I golf on Thursday. I usually, wait a minute, that's okay, cuz they usually move the meetings then to Wednesday. During the summer, so it doesn't mix up with the summer concert series, right, Marty?
Right.
So if they're still gonna do, doing that, I'd be happy to sit on it.
Oh, if you, yeah, they've moved, yeah, they've moved for the concert, for years and years.
So it doesn't interfere with the concerts, and, and, and I happen to golf on Thursday nights. This will be my last year, but it's golfing anyways.
You should have really led with the concert series thing and then thrown the golf in it.
You know, this is a public meeting, Jim.
I'm right forward, I'll, I'll tell you where my love is on the golf cart, so we're good. So I'll, I'll take it.
Everybody good with Jim on Light and Power as long as it doesn't affect his handicap?
Right.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Alright, uh, Look Committee, Cliff.
What? I'm happy unless somebody has a hankering. Only twice a year.
Okay, anybody have a problem with that? Cliff and, alright, Fire Authority, me. I would like to continue, please.
I would like you to continue.
And you, you just moved them from Monday to Thursday?
Yeah, uh, it was one of my, originally when I got on the board and when I was on the fire department, one of my number one complaints was that they had. Afternoon meetings and none of the guys, it's a paid-on-call department. So none of the five, nine-to-five working guys could ever go to these meetings, so. We gotta move to Thursday night at seven, and our first one had probably tripled the attendance we've ever had. Unless they were there mad about something, so it seems to be working out pretty well so far. So I would like to continue doing that. If nobody has a problem with that.
Nope.
Uh, um, so Jim, you got three, Cliff, you got three, that's my second one. And then Leah and Marty each have a board, so, uh, Parks and Rec.
I saw that Greg had that. So if anybody is, I mean, if anybody else is interested, that's fine, but I'm, I'm on board for that.
I think that's.
Nominate Leah.
I'll support.
Alright.
Do you know what night that they meet and what time?
Tuesdays, I think, right, Susie? Tuesdays at six at City Hall.
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday. There's a lot of good people on that board right now, too. And Dan shows up once in a while. Um, Planning Commission, Marty, keeping that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody have a problem with that? Alright, um.
Too many marijuana stores, too many marijuana stores.
No, the last complaint was the billboards coming into town. I can't, I. I'll go to Planning Commission as a citizen to. Express my view. Um, Showboat needs two members, I would like to do it.
I, I would love to be on that, too.
Mike. Anybody have a problem if Jim and I sit Showboat?
Long as you don't sit together, fine.
Six feet apart. Alright, so then we also have, Susie, I'll send this over to you, cuz this is. I've made quite a mess of this list here. Alright, I think that's every board that we're responsible for as a council. Mike Burns, you're planning to continue on the building authority board?
Yes. Okay, I'll be your rep for Grand Valley Metro Council.
Yep, alright, the building authority vacancy, and then we took care of Dennis Kent.
Yep.
We need people, is, are Mark and Teresa still on, or did they?
They're off.
Okay, I'll call Teresa tomorrow, cuz I'm pretty sure she's planning on continuing on Parks. Marty is planning meeting next Monday?
Yes.
Alright, will you check on, I'll send it to you, but can you check on David and Colin?
Yep, I will do that.
They're up for that. Jim, Arbor Board's probably not meeting in December, right?
Uh, no, probably won't meet back till, uh, March or April.
Okay, and then DDA, I can check on Doc Reagan and. Brian Doyle. Historic District, we canceled, I think, already. We can take Cliff off there, he's obviously gonna continue. Cliff, do you have a way to get a hold of Nancy Wood?
Hmm, no, but I can, why?
She's on the vacancy, or the, her appointment is up.
Okay, you want me to see if she, if she wants to re-up?
Yeah.
I'll find her.
And I'll reach out to Steve Doyle, but I would imagine he would like to continue. Um, I know I've never said this at an open meeting before, but get your applications in. To be a citizen representative on these boards. There are, there's a huge need right now. For people who wanna be involved, so get down to Susie and fill out your application. Council comments, let's start with Leah.
Leah, what's paragraph seven subsection?
Fail. Um, I don't know, I'm kind of just taking it all in.
Alright, how about Cliff?
I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Burns. Uh, the MERS people and the police union and the I B E W. For their cooperative efforts to help us. Solve our dilemma. Nobody likes to take less money or less benefits, and I'm just happy that. They recognized and, and took those actions, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
I wanna congratulate Leah on, uh, her first meeting, and congratulations on, on being nominated by us. Um, looking forward to working with you, uh, to that part of it, and, uh. You know, I'm just glad people stepped up tonight on the boards, and, uh, we just need to keep going, other than that, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Marty.
Leah, congratulations, uh, I was there for your swearing-in, uh. You got a lot to learn, it's gonna be, uh, quite interesting.
You're telling me, but thank you.
Um, and this is for Chief. Uh, as I said, maybe you can go back to doing midnights for a while. In the winter, so you can do those downtown filming like you used to do, cuz those were spectacular.
Yeah. I'll try, I'll try. Honestly, I will, I'll be out there.
Um. Michigan Senate passed Bill fifty-four a few days ago. It's supposed to restore the Historic District tax credit for preservation. It was eliminated in two thousand and eleven. I'm following some stuff that Winnie Brink's is doing with that. Um, they're hoping to have it to the House for a vote, and then onto Whitmer's desk before the end of the year, so. Uh, I'm gonna keep an eye on that, cuz I think our downtown, our Historic District could really. Benefit from having that tax credit back, so I'm watching it. I will, uh, I'll keep watching it until they make a decision. Um, that's all I have, Jim.
Uh, make a, make a motion to adjourn at eight forty-seven.
I'll support.
Motion and a second, all those, oh, roll call votes, Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yeah.
And Mayor DeVore.
Yes, we are adjourned.
Right.
Goodnight.
Night, everybody.